Business, we have Mr. Childress accounting. He was so... Again, I'm going to ask that no interruptions you. I'm going to leave it up to Mr. Childress as far as answering questions after the end. If you do ask those questions, I would ask that you be polite and courteous. So, thank you, Mr. Childress. I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, I'd love to be here. My assistant is handing out a new copy of the report that you received. We'll talk a little bit about the line of business. It's also bigger, so I don't know if you're going to read. All right, so start from the top. So, just for the sake of everyone here, I think I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name is James Childress. I'm CPA. I've been doing this for about eighteen years. I spent about thirteen years doing audits and was a assurance director for a regional firm out of Cheyenne. I had three offices in two states and I handled their assurance division for about four years before moving into consulting. And now I basically go around and I solve problems. And this is, you know, I'm the type of work I'm doing now where I show up someplace and I say, "We should have hired you a year ago, and we realized we should have hired you five years ago." And I unravel messes. So, the town of Saratoga does need help in its accounting process and its accounting system, and we're going to go over some of what that is. The main priority that I want to get across to the council members tonight is, I said we have two priorities. The first one is the council getting on board with where their financial statements sit as of now. What's in the financial statements for the June 30, 2019 audit? What they represent? What elements of those financial statements are set in stone? What elements of those financial statements are considered estimates? And this is so that you're going to be able and willing to approve the signing of the representation letter for your auditors. So, the second priority is going to be to help you use some of the work I've accomplished to gain an understanding of some of the historical interfund activities that this town has had and how you can recognize that more appropriately in your financial statements, both internal and external, and what types of changes to your system you should make. Excuse me. So, that type of information is integrated and available to you on a regular basis as opposed to once a year or a year after a year. And so, I'm talking about now. So, in line with that, I have to talk about some general items that we look to the county. I'm going to talk about cash basis and how it affects the town and how you use cash basis. I'm going to talk about accrual basis, how it differs from cash basis and when and why you would use it. Going to talk about estimates and how they relate to your financial statements, how they specifically relate to audited financial statements, and how that should inform the decisions you're going to make. I'm going to use a term I'll repeatedly use called "action of cash." This is something that's very important for you to understand in terms of the decisions the town is being forced to make and the things that are taking place in the past. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the transactions interfund and what we can do with that looking forward. I'm going to talk about representation letters that come from auditors, why you receive them, why you're asked to sign them, and what purpose they serve. I'm going to talk about the professional standards that auditors and the companies have to operate under. So, that kind of summary. Then we go back to the top. Cash basis. The town of Saratoga is a small municipality. Population sixteen ninety is what I saw on the line of town. That means you're subject to a lower standard of financial statement preparation. The Department of Audit will allow you to submit to them an audited cash basis financial statement. Now, that's a good thing because it means that you should have a lot less that you have to do in order to get your financial statement finalized, audited, completed. Nowadays, it's really, it's a whole different ballgame with the way clients interact with their auditors. Auditors are very limited in the types of work they can do for audit clients. There's what they call a self-review threat where if they do the work and then provide their opinion on the work, they're considered to have violated their independence. This becomes something that an auditor does not want to do because it puts their audit into question, puts their credibility into question. So, the town was received, the town received an audit in fiscal year eighteen which basically had a lot of holes in it, a lot of problems that were basically right on the surface. And that was because the auditors felt that they could not resolve these problems, all of them that existed, on behalf of the town without creating a self-review threat to their clients. The findings that they presented in that audit are the primary reason why the town hired me and got my help was because one of those findings was they had, the town had a lack of internal control over preparation of their financial statements. That's essentially the first thing that I came to the town day system with back in October. And so, preparation of the financial statements basically means that the client has to prepare their own financial statements, get them to a level that's sufficient for the auditor to audit them, conduct all of the tests, review all of the documents, test the disbursements, test the receipts, do everything that's necessary to complete their audit, and be able to say that these financial statements that this client prepared are sufficient and you think they're reasonable and material. So, we got to the point where we had a pretty decent financial statement set and there were some questions raised about these interfund transfers that were being recorded. So, now I'll talk a little bit about action of cash. So, I'll use a pretty simplistic example. So, let's say you have three envelopes. They each have ten dollars in them. And you go to the store and you buy something for twenty-five bucks. One envelope is empty, another one's empty, and another one has five dollars in it. You spent ten from one, ten from another, and five from another. In this case, these envelopes are equivalent to, they're standing in as an analogy, they're equivalent to your funds, your internal funds. And funds, those of you who aren't familiar with governmental financials, it's basically each fund is operating as its own entity. They're co-mingled. They operate together in certain ways. In the case of the town of Saratoga, the cash is pooled. They share a common pool of cash that is then basically divided across each of these funds. Now, if that money goes out in that way, with the case of the town of Saratoga, you have a cash basis financial statement. Now, what we've talked about with interfund receivable and payable, if you have an accrual basis financial statement, you will show either a liability from one fund or receivable to a certain fund if they owe each other money. Okay? Now, that stays on the balance sheet. That's an important thing to keep in mind because that is a receivable and a liability. You would show that if you had not done a formal transfer from one fund to the other. If you made a mistake and the cash in this one fund had gotten overdrawn, what you would show is you would show a zero in cash because it can't be negative. There's no such thing as negative cash, right? Think of the envelope. You can't actually go negative. You can't actually pull out your wallet and say, "Here's my negative cash." It doesn't exist, okay? So, you'd have to show a zero, and then you would have to show a debt, a debt that's owed to the other fund. And that would be the example in an accrual basis financial statement. You would have this interfund payable in one fund and an interfund receivable in another fund. However, in the case of the town, your cash basis, one hundred percent cash basis, so you show cash and fund balance. You have no place to put an interfund payable or receivable. It doesn't fit in your financial statement set. The Wyoming state statutes has allowed you to operate on that lower standard. Unfortunately, what it means is that if that interaction takes place, it can very easily be lost. It has to then be recorded as an interfund transfer in order for the balances to show that they need to be. The town has recorded interfund transfers for quite a long time. And on their own, they're not a wholly evil or inappropriate thing. Now, if they're done by accident, it's not a good idea. They should always be done on purpose. They should always be thought out. They should include considerations about whether the funds are restricted, designated, reserved, whether they truly are free and able to move from one fund to another. Now, that involves stock of accountants and involves stock of attorneys getting their input and saying, "Can we move this money in this direction?" So, in this case, though, we're not able to record that interfund receivable or payable, so we have to record an interfund transfer. And that's where we've gotten to this point where we've had interfund transfers for the town for quite a long time. These have shown up in the audited financial statements and they've been because the money was being spent out of pooled cash as if it was essentially more accountable. The interrelationship of these combined cash amounts has not been fully recognized, has not been fully managed and reconciled on a regular basis so that essentially these expenditures were able to take place and the respect that's owed essentially to that individual signing combined cash was not put into place. So, that puts us in a situation now where, when we ended up in February, I think we had this meeting and I was over there and everyone isn't here, and the question came up, "Well, where are we at now? What does one fund owe another?" Because it is an appropriate question. It's an appropriate question, what does one fund owe another when all of these interfund transfers have taken place and we don't necessarily think these transfers were appropriate or correct? Okay? It's a valid question. It's an appropriate question. Now, the issue with that is, what we've done then is even in this very, very small way, we've moved from cash basis. Now, your financial statements are cash basis, but what you've essentially requested, through the response from the town and everyone's input, especially in that meeting specifically, you've requested to include an accrual basis disclosure in your financial statement set. And that would be basically this interfund receivable and payable. It's a common thing you'll see in a lot of the larger entities like City of Cheyenne and State of Wyoming. They have funds just like you do and they're going to have interfund receivables and payables that will sometimes show up. They'll have interfund transfers. But in your case, you've never had to evaluate these numbers and you don't actually in your accounting system have a historical record of these transactions. It just doesn't exist. So, what we have to do is we have to look at it and have to say, "Okay, what's going on here?" The action of cash forces us to make these decisions. It forces essentially these interfund transfers to be reported in that set of financial statements in that way, interfund transfers. But now when we look at it, we want to say, "Okay, what does one fund actually owe the other?" So, that brings up a lot of questions. One, because fund balance is always the accumulated calculation of everything that's happened before it. So, I applaud you for wanting to know these numbers. That's great. It's really good if you want to get a handle on these numbers. I'm glad I was, I and my team were able to help you with this, and it's great. But it's also, should not understate in any way the task that that presents. It's massive. Massive. We looked at twenty years. We pulled in trial balances for twenty years, and I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Essentially, what we had to do is we had to take the internal data from twenty years of trial balances, which is basically, a trial balance is basically one report that shows the resulting activity and assets liabilities, fund balance, revenues, et cetera. Basically, we combine all of these and then we have to combine them so that they match into the audit. Otherwise, what you'd be looking at really wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't jive with the things you've already seen. So, we have to go through that process and it's relatively complex. And sometimes things don't quite jive again because even still with your cash basis financial statement set for the auditors, you had a consistent kind of fund balance running through that. They've assisted the town. They've recommended adjustments. The town has accepted and signed these representation letters, saying, "We agree with these and we don't think there's anything out there that disagrees with it." So, this has happened through all this period of time and we have to basically mesh it all together. And then we've got to look at it and we've got to say, "Well, what expenses do we consider one fund owing another?" Now, that's a no. I know that's a hot issue and I know it's a challenging thing to think about, especially when we think twenty years. Why are we looking at twenty years? Why would we go back? You wouldn't have, you know, if your friend said, "Hey, by the way, you bought me this movie ticket twenty years ago. Where's my money?" You'd be like, "Are you crazy?" And rightfully so. But in this case, we have to prepare a number. We have to prepare a number. We've been asked to do that. And so, there's all of these things that are considerations that we can't exclude. We can't pick and choose. And in this case, interfund overhead is something that we would consider to be fair across all funds. And I'll give you an example a little bit about what happens with other entities. So, in a larger, larger organization like the State of Wyoming, what you'll sometimes see is they will have an IT department, information technology, the guys who fix your computers and fix your email when it's not working. Now, these are guys who don't fulfill a specific government function and they're not providing a service to external users. Like you couldn't go to the State of Wyoming and say, "Hey, can you just fix my laptop?" That's not what they're there for. They're there for the State of Wyoming. What we call this is we call this an internal service fund. And now, when they perform activities for the state, everything that they do ends up getting allocated. It ends up getting billed to the other funds essentially because those expenses would have to show up in those funds in order for them to properly budget, in order for them to properly plan. You might come to a certain area, let's say they're the county clerks, where they're constantly doing titles and deeds and maybe they have really complex proprietary software that takes a lot of unusual upgrades to their system and they've got all these updates and it's crashing all the time. Maybe they're using this internal service fund fifty percent of the time compared to everyone else across all of these other areas that are using the rest. Okay, well, they need to understand, this organization, the State of Wyoming, needs to understand, okay, fifty percent of this expense, whatever it is, is over here. It's not just this thing on its own. It has to be allocated. So, we think about interfund expenses. We also think about, I'm sorry, overhead expenses. We also think about shared expenses, essentially where one entity would and should be billing another. One example, that is the water and sewer fund. When we look back at this over all this period of time, we have to say, "Okay, the water and sewer fund, they're processing the water. They're controlling the system. They're making replacements, they're fixing water lines." They show that through their user charges. So, we have to then show, okay, who is responsible for some of this and where do these billings go? And in that case, it kind of goes the other direction, doesn't it? Between the, like in this case, we have an overhead funds that we would say would be town hall and planning. They're essentially conducting work for the whole organization. It has to be allocated in some way. But then we also say, "Okay, water and sewer." Water and sewer is also, it's going in the other direction where it needs, in the case of town hall, town hall has a meter. Town hall uses water. We could all go use the restroom. We could all go fill a cup with a glass of water. Where did that come from? It came from the town's water system. So, we have to reflect that. So, all of these considerations come into play and that's kind of pushing us in the direction of getting as accurate as we can be and that's helping us understand where we can go with this. But there's another consideration, which is very importantly, we don't have forever and we have to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere. The town wants these numbers, I think it's great. I applaud your efforts in this way to determine these numbers for yourself and to have these right in front of you so you can make all the decisions that would relate to it. But it's also true that this is now considered an item that's materially important to your audit and your audit needs to get done, which means if we've got to, if we've got to make it tight and keep it together with a little bit of bubble gum or whatever, for now, that's appropriate because in every financial statement set you'll see out there, it's a required note disclosure and note disclosures are where you usually have the auditor's opinion, then you'll have the balance sheet, you'll have the income statement, then you're going to have note disclosures, one through whatever goes on forever sometimes, pages and pages. Then you'll have what they call supplementary information, which will be other things, other reports that have to be included. In those note disclosures, you're always going to see one that says "estimates." It's pretty much always going to be the same verbiage, which is going to say, "This financial statement is subject to preparation of estimates." And even in the case of your case where you have cash and fund balance, you're still going to have that disclosure and it's still absolutely relevant. Now, what this should mean to you is you should also feel comfortable saying, "We think we can move forward with these numbers because it's an estimate and we're not being held accountable for twenty years of financial information. We're not going to be bludgeoned over the head and no one else can expect us to bludgeon them over the head with this number." That's important. So, that being said, okay, before I move into the report itself, let's talk a little bit about representation letters, okay? I know it's a hot issue. I requested a representation letter from the town and that is pretty standard. Every audit I've ever been on, there's a representation letter. And of course, I'm not auditing your books, but a representation letter is still an important consideration. And this is why it's very important to you because a representation letter is where you tell your practitioner, your accounting practitioner, that you agree with all of these numbers. What that means, and this happens with every engagement you're going to be on with any external practitioner, that means that your numbers are always your numbers. You always have the sign off. You always have the power with that. No one can take that from you. Now, that right and that responsibility is provided to you by the professional standards. Now, the professional standards govern what I do, they govern what your auditors now and your auditors prior and going back forever do. It tells them what framework they have to work in, what they have to do, what they have to use judgment to do, and how they have to conduct their audit. And I'll tell you one hundred percent, it is required without fail. It is the most important thing that happens in any audit. You must sign that representation letter. It's absolutely imperative. Let me tell you what happens. Okay, the representation letters where it's going to be a list and most of the time it's pretty boilerplate. Sometimes when there's unusual things in the audit, like an entity has an unusual patent and it has to be amortized over these, you know, many years and they have to use a specialist to calculate it because it's only this weird thing, whatever, weird stuff happens. You might find that they have a representation in there and that would essentially be them saying to you, "Hey, we calculated this for you. We think we can do that and still not have a self-review independence threat, but we need to go over it with you and we need to make sure you understand it one hundred percent so that you can again say, 'These are our numbers. We're confident these are correct with everything we've learned and everything we know.'" Okay? So, the representation letter gives you the power, but let me tell you this also. A representation letter is such an important step that the auditors have an out. It is absolutely okay for an auditor to give you a representation letter that they think is fair according to the standards and if you decline to sign it, what they issue is a disclaimer of opinion where they say, "Here's your financial statements. They have not been audited. We provide you no opinion." And that means they're on, they've fulfilled their professional responsibility, they've actually followed everything correctly, and you don't have audit. So, that's very important for you to realize. This representation letter is basically, it's the handshake. It's the equivalent of years ago to be like, "I think it's right. Yeah, I think it's right. Good." Okay? It's what it's basically turned into now since representation letter. It's the handoff. Without it, what they basically have is that independence thing, which I've talked about, governs these whole, the entire engagement. They have to remain independent. That's what everyone wants, right? They want to know that the auditor isn't actually, you know, the CEO's brother, you know, or he owns ninety percent of the stock in the corporation. It's absolutely critical. So, that's why we're here because we have to be comfortable with that. We have to be able to accept that representation letter and move forward. So, let's dig into this. So, what you receive, you receive a revised copy of this estimated interfund overhead. And as I mentioned in my email, this is an estimate. It in no way, I think, reduces the expectation of the work that was required to get to this point, twenty years of data. It's an estimate and it will remain an estimate, I think, until you approach some of these outside parties like the Impact Joint Powers Board, the water and sewer organizations, and you say, "Hey, we think we have an issue here." Because you do. You have an amount of money that's been pulled from those funds. We could talk forever about whether it was restricted, unrestricted, whatever. In my opinion, I think it's restricted except the portion that relates to the interfund overhead, but that's all beside the point. This money did move by the action of cash. We have an envelope over here with five bucks that used to have ten. Another one over here that used to have ten bucks and now has zero. That's what we're talking about. The money went out. It went out of the general fund and just by the basic action of cash, we can't have the negative, it also went out of these other funds. So, let's talk about it. So, I'm looking at the report with the yellow border and this is going to be our scheduled fund balances and estimate interfund overhead for the nineteen-year period and the June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. I want to talk a little bit about how this is calculated. You'll see at the top in that blue section, rows one through five, we start with beginning fund balance. We add in revenues, we subtract expenditures, we also add in transfers either in or out to get an ending fund balance. And this is where you were at. This is in our financial statement set that we looked at in February. The ending fund balance here is your beginning fund balance for fiscal year nineteen. So, this is the ending for fiscal year eighteen. Now, once we get past that first section, that basically shows everything as a whole, activity from two thousand through June thirty, two thousand and eighteen to our ending balance as calculated. And if you go down further on line six and seven, what you'll see here is we take, for line six, we show expenditures without overhead. This is what they call a cost-on-cost overhead allocation. Now, it may be over time that this will change a little bit, but I want to tell you what this, what this basically means. When we started this process, again, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We wanted to get to a point where we could button this up, maybe use some duct tape if we had to, and get to a point where we could say, "This is the starting point. We can move forward from here. We can go to the auditors and say, 'We're confident we can move forward from here.'" So, in general fund ten, you'll see six thousand, six oh seven. This is the total of all the expenses for the town hall and the planning department. This is what we've identified as our most reliable, certain overhead cost is in those two departments that reside in the general fund, fund ten. So, what we do is we take those out of the expenditures that we saw before on line three. We show expenditures without overhead on line six and then the overhead expenditures on line seven. Then what we do is we have to figure out how to allocate it. Again, hundreds of thousands of transactions. What do we do? So, town hall and planning, we start thinking, "Okay, how do these expenditures get utilized?" And the most basic way to think about it is transactions. You're approving transactions constantly. You are reviewing transactions constantly, conducting business. They all come out in terms of individual transactions. Now, we could do a count of transactions and use that or we could use, you know, the dollar amount. In this case, we effectively use both. Some of the bigger transactions, yeah, you might have one a year, but they might take you a lot of time. They might take accounting staff a lot of time to figure it out. How does this need to be recorded? Is it valid for us to do this, so on and so forth? In this case, what we decided essentially is we're going to look to a basket of expenses that we feel are consistent across all of these parts. If these expenses exist, we feel they use the town hall and planning department. So, these expenses would have included payroll and all payroll benefits, health insurance, travel supplies, advertising, utilities, banks, bank charges, professional fees, membership dues, repairs and insurance, all of these things. Now, it was noted to me that account, sorry, fund forty-nine probably did not have any eligible expenses according to the basket. So, that's why I revised this for the version we're looking at tonight. I looked back and I realized, "Okay, yeah, the names seemed a little bit different, but looking at it, I can see that point that makes a lot of sense." Those were essentially just contracts, just basically inflow, outflow, and it was only for one year. So, it's very clear this is basically just reserved for that type of thing. In this case, but if it falls into these categories, we're essentially saying, "Okay, town hall was involved. They had to make decisions. At minimum, the accounting department for town hall had to, had to act and process these." A great example for this is going to be, and there's been a lot of talk about what belongs in the water and sewer expenses and the restriction related to water and sewer, and I think that's totally not inappropriate. Is there payroll in the water and sewer? Yeah. Is that absolutely important for the conduct of the water and sewer activities? Yeah, absolutely important. What about the expense of preparing payroll? What about the expense of preparing payroll, which is not insignificant? I had a client who, we took over their full service bookkeeping. She spent two days a month preparing payroll for this one entity. That's a significant expense when you think about it. At a minimum, it should be allocated across the funds. Again, because when we look at water and sewer and weed and pest and these enterprise funds, we want to be certain we've included all the expenses. What if it's like that example with the county clerk? And they don't realize they're spending $100,000 a year using these systems. They're basically using the IT department to like patch this thing up, make it work. That would tell them, wait a minute, we should probably just invest $50,000 to hire some programmer from the local high school or from India to make the system the worst, right? They can make those judgments now because they have all the expenses in the right place. So that's the theory behind that basket. And that's why that comes in there, you'll see on line 8, you'll see the expenses basket for weighted average for funds using overhead costs. Now, that's not really an expense number that gets factored into our total. What that is, is it's an expense number to give us a weighted average. So you'll notice in fund 10, general fund, we have about 25 million. And it should be no surprise here, we've got this overhead that we're allocating out, but the general fund gets 80% of it. And that's part of where it gets a little confusing, like, well, we're allocating all this out. No, 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 what we're doing is we're saying, this is overhead, and then how much does everyone get it? How much does everyone get on it, including the place where it originated, right? We're talking about that example of payroll, payroll's processed for the water and sewer fund, but payroll's also processed for town hall itself. So they should get an allocation of the costs of preparing payroll. And in this case, yeah, they do, that's the idea. So you'll see we create those percentages. Then we apply those percentages, like you'll see here on line 11, we apply those percentages, the same ones, to the total overhead. And once we've done that, we find how we can take this 6.6 million in this case and split it out in a rational, logical manner across all of these funds and allocate it. So then we also look, okay, what about other things that go across these funds? What are the things that we need to look at? Well, it's brought to my attention. We had some millings from the runway restoration project, and then those were reused in streets. Great, hey, that's an excellent choice for a fiscal entity to reuse things. It's a great idea. However, it is important for us to recognize the value of that, okay? That was an expense originally years ago when you spent, I mean, I forget what it is, it's like a million dollars for 100 feet of runway. Years ago, when that was first installed and put into place, that cost a lot of money. So we have to recognize that. In this case, the fair market value of those used runway millings, the estimate we had at the time was around 50,000. So you'll see that that goes out, that goes out from the airport, it goes into the general fund, which is where the streets department is being handled, okay? Now further down, on line 13, we have utility billings for town departments. We talked a little bit about this. Water and sewer fund, obviously they're maintaining water and sewer system, and it takes a lot of work, and there's a lot that goes into that. I audited a water and sewer utility for about 10 years before I became their consultant. So we have to show that as well. In this case, so what this ends up being is a reduction in expense for water and sewer and weed and pest for those items, and an increase in expense in general fund 10. So now at the bottom in the light blue, I guess it's a little bit louder, you'll see we have beginning fund balance on line 15, same as what we saw before. Revenues, unaffected, same as what we saw before from line 2. And then revised transfer, I'm sorry, revised expenditures on line 17. That's what you see also on line 14. That's the addition for each of those funds of the allocated overhead, anything that went in between funds really directly. That's that new number, that new revised expenditures. And then we get to line 18. Now, this is a little bit of a mental backflip, so let me talk a little bit about this. This is what we call the revised transfers for overall positive fund balance. It's important to note that it's part of my state statutes, we can't represent a deficit fund balance. In your case, you have nothing really else to move, nothing else that moves and shakes in your financial statement, except for cash to show either zero or positive. You can't have a deficit fund balance. You have to manage it so you avoid that. It's been our goal to try to find some way within the standards, within the rules, within generally accepted accounting principles, to find some way where we can say, okay, we think we're safe, we didn't violate that. And that's basically what happens here on line 18. You'll see we have an addition to all of these funds that were going past zero into deficit fund balance. The general fund is essentially, for lack of a better word, bailing them out with its surplus. And again, we have to kind of split this out for us to see kind of the action and how the funds relate to each other. But you'll see that that goes out of the general fund. Now unfortunately, because of the activities of many, many years and all these deficits that we've had, especially 2000 through 2018, that means then we do that transfer, okay, now the general fund is made. But of course, you can't show it in there. That means by the action of cash, but money has come from somewhere. Now, we run into more compliance considerations if we just say, ah, it came from the airport. We can't do that. FAA doesn't like that. We say it came from special revenue funds, well, no, that doesn't work. Those monies have to be used for what they were originally created for. So again, we're forced, we're forced to make these decisions. There's only one other place it could have come from. It has to come from somewhere. Water, sewer, weed and pest, enterprise funds. It's about the best news of the day, but it's the box we find ourselves in. We'll talk about how we get ourselves out of that. So, let's look at the green border, scheduled fund balances and estimated interfund overhead for the 14-year period and June 30, 19. Now, in this case, what we're doing is we're starting where we just left off on the yellow border. So we're starting there, and we're taking, again, the basket. We're using the basket, but just in this case, just for this one year, we're trying to look, okay, what actually happened in the year we're doing this audit for, June 30, 19? What actually happened? In this case, you'll see we have, oh, I'm sorry, you have to be on the blue one. Apologize. The blue one, yeah. So in this case, we see on line 6, we've got expenditures without overhead. On line 7, overhead expenditures, in this case for one year, town hall and planning, 441. That's one year. And then we use the basket, again, again, this basket is determined by what happened in that specific year. We determine those ratios. We apply the overhead by those ratios. We also add in utility billings, going from water, sewer, back to general fund. And again, we recalculate. Beginning fund balance, revenues, revised expenditures, same as we did before. Does the general fund have to come to another fund's aid in order to accomplish statute compliance for a deficit fund balance? It does, but you'll notice here in this case, we end up with positive general fund balance. First time the town has had that happen in quite a long time. And that's a very good thing. What that means then with what we're recording here is, we don't want to disregard what took place between the water, sewer, weed and pest funds and the general fund. We have to acknowledge it, and we have to try to support these funds appropriately. So you'll see, and this jives with the financial you saw in February. We have a transfer out of the general fund into those funds. In February, it was a little bit, it was different numbers that we were looking at. We didn't have this overhead allocation, so on and so forth. It was around 30,000, but it was an extraction from the general fund over to these enterprise funds. Now, that's important, because I want to make the note here, there's a lot of concern over these fund balances, but everyone here in this room should have a vested interest in every single one of these fund balances. But it's also important to realize, every one of these fund balances is going to need to have at some point a depreciation reserve. And so when I look at this, and let's go ahead and now switch to the one I meant, the, or an accident. The green border. When we look at this one, we look at what happened over all of these years with these estimates we did, when we're trying to find some way to come to a conclusion as to what an interfund receivable and payable is, we end up with 1,400,000 that was pulled in this analysis from the water, sewer, weed and pest fund. But I'm here to tell you, that is just the beginning. Because in truth, I would very much doubt if, even if that was remedied right now and you had the 1.5 million in the water fund, I would very much doubt that that would be a sufficient depreciation reserve for that department. I haven't seen their fixed asset schedule, but I know that with the entities I've worked with, some of these water and sewer areas, you've got one corner that you haven't touched in 25 years, and you know when it comes due, oh man, it's going to be expensive. And I know for you guys, it's probably a whole different deal, because you're out here, and who knows where the people you're hiring are coming from? Maybe they're coming from Denver, maybe they're coming from Utah, right? It's expensive to get this kind of work done. So I acknowledge and I appreciate everyone's concern over what happened here. I also don't, we could talk about the numbers themselves, and in my honest opinion, I think we could spend too much time on it, because in reality, the bigger issues is funds raised up to be sufficient to accomplish its depreciation reserve, and above that, sufficient operating cash to operate month to month, and above that, maybe purchase the new equipment they need that isn't related to the water, sewer system itself. It's a long list. Not only mention the fact that you're going to have a capital replacement schedule and a depreciation reserve that needs to be in place for the general fund, the community garden, community center, all of these things. So, I'm not understating what's happened in the past. I wish it was, I wish it hadn't happened. I wish we weren't here talking about these things and struggling with these issues. But I think it's very important to realize, we have to treat every fund in the same way. That might mean there's expenses in the throw of that overhead that we have it. That's valid. If it comes up, let's address it. But we have to acknowledge what actually happened with cash. That's pushing us in this direction. And if we want to know those numbers, we also have to acknowledge, there's no way of getting to this point without estimating, without jumping over a few holes that would probably need to get filled in order to get here, in order to get to the point where we're here. Now, again, what this is going to end up being, is going to end up being one note disclosure in your financial statements, and it's going to correspond to another note disclosure that says estimates. The accounting rules allow that if your estimate is wrong, let's say in the coming year you have an estimate and it's completely incorrect, it completely bonded somehow, but it's an estimate because some data was missing, something was not factored in. It's not a mistake, but if something was not factored in, we didn't know all the data. The accounting standards truly allow you to correct an estimate going forward. You don't have to go backward to correct an estimate if it's wrong. So think about that when you think about, what is the threshold we have to come to? What's the burden of proof upon us here? How far do we have to go? My opinion, I think you've gone there. I think you've satisfied this. And I think you've also set yourself up where you can integrate these numbers into your own system. Now, what this will look like, when we posted those adjustments, June 30, 19, I know that was an issue, but what we put in there was we put in these changes in cash. We started the process of merging the financial statement set that you had as an audit, which is your formal financial statement set, and the one that you have internally. And I'll tell you, this happens everywhere, about 95% of the time, whether I'm doing a tax return, I'm doing an audit, or a review, or a compilation, or anything, the client doesn't look the entries. They just don't. And they're complex, and they're difficult to understand sometimes. And I'll also say, I love auditors. Most of the ones I've met work really, really hard for their clients, but most of the time, they don't package those adjustments where they say, this is how you post these. They explain to them why they're needed, and usually that comes across pretty clearly, again, because it's necessary. But they don't say, okay, this one you have to put in, this one you have to reverse in order to not show that expense twice, and all of these things that come into play. So it's complex, it takes a lot, and if you weren't involved in the audit, you may not understand what you need to do from where they left off. You can look at those financial statements and say, yeah, I think that's right. But I don't know how to bridge the gap. It takes a little bit of a different skill set. So we're working on that. We posted those adjustments to start bringing all this stuff in line. Now, what I think it's going to mean internally is that this interfund receivable and payable, we're going to want to go ahead and record that, and we're going to want to go ahead and start taking responsibility for it, and doing some kind of monthly review and reconciliation to get these numbers in, and to acknowledge some of this interfund activity. Okay. So, oh, yeah, the other thing, the other big sheet. Okay, so if you turn over the big sheet, it's got the black background. This is your chart. Sometimes charts are way more helpful than just a bunch of numbers. You'll see here, the orange line is our general fund, the green line is water, sewer and weed and pest. These are annual net income and loss totals for the town, and these are pulled right from your trial balances. So you'll see here, you can see some of this activity, but most notably, you're going to see 2010 through 2018, that whole time, we're below the bar. That ends up being 3.7 million dollars in total losses through that period of time. Now, it was my impression, I think it was also other people's impression, that when we saw each of these kind of on their own, that it was, okay, interfund overhead and the general funds not being correctly allocated. But that's part of the problem. That's why when we look at these things and we go back over a period of time, we start seeing a little bit of a different story, looks very different when you start adding all these numbers together. So again, the town's in a pickle. You have some challenges to go through, but I've also heard that there's no such thing as a challenge, there's just problems and opportunities. So you have a lot of opportunities in front of you to rebuild and make this better. So let's talk about my recommendation. So it's my recommendation that you work hand in hand very closely with your auditors over the next week. You find some way where you can comfortably sign their representation letter. If that means you need more discussion with them, I think you need to go ahead and do it, get to the point where you're comfortable with it. But again, let yourself be kind of guided by the fact that you have an estimate. You have a disclosure relating to an estimate, and that's a very important thing for you to say, okay, this doesn't need to be perfect. We're not subject to that burden of proof for this audit. It's essential that you get your audit done. I've been saying that since last over. It's absolutely essential. You need to become compliant with the Department of Audit. So you need to find some way to bridge that gap, get across that gap, that independence gap with the auditors signing a representation letter. And then internally, what you're going to want to do is you're going to want to go ahead and record this interfund receivable and payable, and you're going to want to start using a process like this or one you've developed even further. It's really great if internally you can go the full step of actually having time sheets. Where, you know, maybe you have someone, the people who are in maybe a designated overhead department, you have them indicate what fund they actually work in. You can, I'm doing this because there are apps now that you can put on your phones, where it's really, really quick. People can select what job code they're working on, they can sit, you know, they do that for maybe just in the morning or the afternoon, or, you know, two-hour blocks or whatever, they say, I worked on this, I worked on this, and the system can start calculating this for you. And you can start using payroll numbers that are actually current, and that'll stand up. That'll stand up against an outside organization looking at this. And it's kind of an extrapolation of this process, but it helps you get there. It helps you get there in a way you can feel confident about and record it in your system. And then you'll start looking at your combined cash and start monitoring those a little bit more closely based on what actually happened with the action of cash, how one cash fund acted on the other, maybe because it worked in deficit, okay? And then if the combined cash process and that interfund overhead allocation process is too much for you to work through, my recommendation at that point would be that you depart from the pooled cash system. It'll require a little bit more of administrative work, because basically water will have a checking account, sewer will have a checking account. And I know it's like, oh, golly, but in that case, what you'll be able to do is you'll be able to say, this is this, this is this, this is this, it's black and white, there's no debate. The only debate you'll have to get over is at the start, where you say, how much money goes into each account? After that, it's basically split. Those are basically your two options there. You either have to fully engage with combined cash, where it's pooled and it's shared across funds, and you take those extra steps of recognizing the interfund receivables and payables, interfund transfers, and actually looking at the combined cash number for each fund when you make decisions about your expenditures, or depart and pull the cash and go ahead and designate, actually designate, an individual bank account that sits in for that entity, that fund. So let me address a few questions that came my way yesterday. You answered several questions, I really appreciate that, and I'm glad I came to the end of the meeting because I thought this might be a little dull, but I appreciate everyone's willingness to. willingness to hang in there. Um, let me make sure to find the page I was supposed to turn to. All right, um, so, question, where the money used to fund that level of deficit spending came from? I'll try to blast some of these kinda quick. Where the money used to fund that level of deficit spending came from? Okay, so I talked a little bit about that, action of cash, right? Cash went out, that's a fact, it's not debatable, really. Um, where did it come from? Okay, we're not taking it from the FAA, we're not taking it from the airport fund, we're not taking it from special revenue funds, has to come from somewhere, water sewer and pest, that's an assumption we're working off of right now, in order to protect, we wrap up our audit. Why is this still an estimate? Okay, this is 20 years of data, 20 years of data is meant to give you a broad overview, it's meant to, it's meant to kind of allow some averaging to take place of outliers along the way, things that would have been weird and provided a skewing of it, um, in the last five years, or eight, or whatever. It also allows us to see things like that chart, or even like 20 years of data, we could imagine if we looked at that chart, and we went back within that period of losses, it really would have skewed the result, because we wouldn't have actually started with a positive general fund cash number, right? That's really important. We have to go back far enough where you can say, okay, we think we've accomplished, we think we've gone to a neutral point, and we've come forward, but it still ends up being 20 years of data. So, we have, we have to acknowledge that, to be willing to move forward with an estimate. Will the balance of the general fund as of June 3019 be positive or negative? With the audit, it will be barely positive, and that's the idea that we're trying to be compliant with state statutes, and recognize the, the action of cash, and we can show a negative cash amount. Question was whether or not it was my intention to eliminate any ambiguity and spell things out down to the penny, as I said in the March 11th meeting. Uh, that's very much my goal, but it's all, everything I do is always couched, and I know you're looking at my invoices, I try to be very, very detailed in my invoices, and I know the dollars rack up, I've been doing this with my rates, my early rate actually unchanged since 2011, and I have numerous clients that I build in the same way I build you, but I'm always trying to find a way to accomplish things in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible. And so, uh, yeah, I wanna get things down to the penny, I want the, the council to be confident they've got every, this, every report they need and the numbers they need down to the penny to confidently move forward, um, but it's always gotta be in mind my ability to serve you, and how, how far do you wanna go down some of these rabbit holes to get answers? Do you believe this report achieves the goal of representing these fund balances to a material level? Yes, I believe they're materially correct. How is this exercise of retroactively applying overhead allocations consistent with the cash basis of accounting? So I addressed that, it's not a cash basis number, and that's part of the challenge here, right? It's an accrual basis number, and it's also an accrual basis number that includes all the history of the town. Fund balance technically goes back to square one, just like when you think about your bank balance, it goes back to when you first opened that balance, ever first opened that account. Um, and then the fair allocation of expenditure across the funds is not a sufficient explanation for that level of activity. So that, that's what I was talking about, basically, we were thinking, because we have these small tidbits coming in, in each, uh, year, we were thinking, okay, that's probably because there is an inter-fund overhead being allocated out of the general fund, so it's at the deficit. Well, clearly, uh, it doesn't accomplish the, uh, it doesn't fully explain what we have with beginning fund balance, a little bit of activity, 3.7 million in losses, and then where we're at now. That's not all the inter-fund, inter-fund overhead being in the wrong spot. That's inter-fund overhead, sure, but beyond that, it's, it's money coming from other funds. So, would you consider it to be a legitimate proper level of activity? Yeah, so what you should have in there, for this inter-fund activity, you should just have it at inter-fund overhead. That really should be it going forward. Are you aware of any time over fiscal year 2010 through 18, that the budget officer requested the transfers? Okay. Specifically by the action of cash. It forces on the other fund the, the pulling in of money, so that's really what I'd say there. Who authorized the inter-fund transfers? Okay, that's an important question, but again, if people are looking at pooled cash, and they're saying, this is our available cash to accomplish this, and they pull from it, but the combined portion, the portion that actually relates to the general fund, isn't sufficient, you've created a deficit, and then internally because of the action of cash, you pulled money from another fund. Uh, do you consider the governing body? I'm not really sure, uh, who the governing body is, uh, between the town and Saratoga, and carbon counting impact joint powers board, seems like you approved those expenditures here and recorded them here, um, so I, I don't really, that's outside the scope of that. There was a question about calculations and how we got to any fund dossier, I think we covered that, uh, so I, I hope that's clear, we'll open it up for questions here in a little bit, and if it's not, we'll begin to do it. Why is there discrepancy between that number and the estimate? Okay, so, uh, in that report, you'll see, it comes to about 1 million as that inter-fund payable to the enterprise funds, and I gave it the caveat, which was that there might be a reduction in that number based on inter-fund transfers that do not net. Okay, so when we look at, when we try to combine this data, we basically have some inter-fund transfers that, it should always net to zero, meaning when we have a transfer out of 10, we always have a transfer in of $10, okay? Should always be equivalent across all of the funds, and sometimes you'll record a transfer in, but you don't, you don't get the transfer out correctly, maybe it's expense, okay? And sometimes, what you really need is you need a very consistent account code setup, where everything in this 900 series, for instance, you've got a 900 series, but you have some transfers that kinda happen here and there, and again, you're talking about 20 years of data, um, but you wanna get to the point where you're monitoring that on a monthly, quarterly basis, and say, do these net. Otherwise, what you had, is you had an expense recorded for a transfer out, and in this case, when we look at 20 years, we basically have a remainder. It doesn't sum to zero, it sums to 334,000. And in some of these cases, we've seen accounts where it says, transfer from reserves. Now, it's important when you look at the budget process, sometimes when you include a transfer in from your reserve, you think, okay, this adds into our budgeted available revenue. Sometimes that can kinda get overlapped with the idea that it's a revenue, and technically it's not a revenue. If it's your reserve, it's already, it's already earned, collected, and processed, and so a transfer in from a reserve is not a revenue. And that might be part of what happened, and basically I'm just saying, okay, we're talking, familiar about a relationship here at the bottom line, inter-fund receivable and payable, between the general fund, water sewer, and weed and pest. In this case, I assumed it was just in the general fund, that that discrepancy, which amounts to a transfer out, was in the general fund. If that was actually originating in the water sewer and weed and pest, well, that would just change that number, it would just drop that number down. An important thing to consider, worthy of additional research, at the moment, I'd say not your concern, because the auditors are mostly concerned about how big is this inter-fund payable be? What's the worst case scenario? And that's what I think we've tried to zero in on. Uh, fund 24 and why it received 116,000, uh, I think we worked through that and revised that, this, I'm sorry, the specific purpose tax funds absorbing overhead, that's what's changed in what you've seen. Um, did the over allocation, overhead allocation to each fund vary from year to year? So, again, to save time, and to try to be efficient and button this up, we went from 2000 to 2018, and then 90, and that's essentially what we've done to try to, to try to get to where we're at right now and have a reasonable estimate. In my report, at the bottom, it says no assurance is provided. That's something that basically happens on an auditor or an accountant, in my case, I'm not auditing your books, but that's, uh, a disclosure that's required, that basically tells the reader, I'm not issuing an official opinion on these financial statements, and it's not an, an attempt to withdraw and not participate in the engagements. Um, it's merely something like, because I'm not independent of the town, because I've assisted you in preparing your books and your, your financial statements, I can't actually issue anything. Again, I'm not independent, I don't feel I have a conflict of interest, but I have prepared parts of your books, I've prepared this report, which accumulates all of these numbers. I've essentially acted in a management role, and so I can't provide assurance, is the way that it basically said, and it has to be on that report, otherwise I'm, in non-compliance and professional standards. How is it possible that this general fund deficit continued to grow for nine fiscal years without being properly addressed? I can't really comment on that. Um, I think, uh, probably the wrong internal reports were reviewed, um, but ultimately, I, I just didn't comment, I wasn't there, and I don't know what was being looked at, or what was not being looked at. And I provided some detail to the council on the Government Finance Officers Association's best practice advisory for indirect cost allocation, I hope you reviewed it, uh, so, if you wanna geek out on this kinda stuff, it's great to read. And in there, they say, uh, you should do this for a maximum of three years, what they're essentially referring to is, you should develop a method, and it takes considerable cost and time, as I think you know, you should develop a method, and then you shouldn't let it go stale, you should basically review it every three years and, and evaluate it. In this case, for our purposes, with us trying to get past the audit, get it done, button it up, uh, we've done 20 years, because there's really no way to go back, it's, no way to get that number without going back that far. You can see if we went back just three years, it would really interfere, we'd probably get some inconsistent data, because within that period, we can say there's some real outliers in terms of the activity of the town. Um, and then, the Government Finance Officers Best Practice Advisory also says, sorry, I'm drying out, just trying to make sure this kinda quick, I'll probably fail on that point. Um, the government should obtain ownership of the final work product. Uh, that, I think, really most productively for the town would be an integration of this into the town's, uh, books and records, and I think you could, uh, engage someone to accomplish that, or you could, you could start looking at that yourself, it's a trade-in along those lines. Management needs to be involved in the process, knowledgeable about the methodology used? Do you consider that people you spoke with, they've been knowledgeable about the methodology used? Yeah, I believe so. Again, it's a relatively straightforward method, uh, we're not, uh, slicing and dicing the data, so we're not really picking and choosing, we're attempting to be fair across each fund, and I think it was pretty clear that we were using expenses, uh, in those baskets that everyone could kind of agree on. Does the town of Saratoga have a system in place that ensures that data are appropriately classified per this method? Not yet. Again, I suggest, uh, timesheets and equipment logs, uh, to build some of those things out, recorded appropriately. Are the net assets to water sewer enterprise funds understated in the most current town of Saratoga financial statement? Haven't seen it, so I, I don't know, um, I think you need to do more work to integrate this, uh, action of cash into your financial statements better than anything. Are the net assets to water sewer enterprise funds understated in the most recent version of the draft financial compliance report? Um, so the auditors will likely propose some additional adjustments to bring it in line with this report, again, it's a matter of consistency, and they wouldn't really wanna give you a representation letter unless they felt that it was on the system. Um, so that'll probably have some changes to it, but I don't think they'll be significant because we've essentially, uh, through all of this, tied to the action of cash as our, as our baseline, and what has basically preceded what we've recorded as inter-fund transfers. Why do you believe it is appropriate to consider overhead for a 20-year period against fund deficits from only 2010 through 2018? So, just so I'm not misunderstood, uh, basically, the overhead allocation was processed over 20 years, uh, 19, and then one year, um, and in this case, uh, it was, that total was compared to what we had for beginning fund balance, all of the activity through all of those years, so, even though we had that large deficit, it wasn't likely to pull that out as an outlier, we included it in those total numbers. What was the surplus deficit in the general fund in each year from 98 to 2009? So, uh, in the 2000, 2009 range, we had, we went from a $229,000 deficit to a $777,000 surplus, so that's kind of the range, uh, general fund balance excluding transfers at 2009, so this is where we kind of go into that period where we have all these losses, at that point is basically 2.5 million. And that's why you see, okay, we're right around a million with some of these other things, just guys, 2.5, 2.7, a little bit of a bump up at the end of the year, and some of these expenses going across basically is, is what kinda gets us there. Are you aware that, uh, expenses are already allocated? Yes, so, uh, that's great, yeah, we have utilities, contract services, telephone, professional fees, all of those are allocated to those individual funds, that's excellent, and that's great. In this case, that also serves our purpose, because if we have expenses that are appropriately recorded in these departments that we're using in overhead, then we have a proper, complete recording of expense in that department to allocate across all of these different funds. So, that, that serves our purpose very well. Okay, uh, summarize, do these count for multiple general fund departments, or just the town hall? So we use town hall and planning as kind of a baseline, just those two departments for our overhead, and then seem to indicate that the transfers might in fact be documented in water sewer and pest. Okay, so that's kinda what I was talking about, transfers in net, uh, there's something going on in there, uh, that's worth looking into, but that would probably also be governed by going to the water sewer boards and saying, hey, how far do we wanna dig into this? Uh, provide more detailed information as to how the utility billings for town departments and that was calculated. Okay, so, um, yeah, the, the, the town meters do read, at least they read most of the time, our data was limited, we had going back to 2015, um, but we were able to get meter reading data for a bunch of the town meters. In some cases, we were able to determine, I worked with John Winter, he's very, very helpful, uh, in helping us get this together, kind of, kind of, but yeah. But, we were able to determine, okay, some of these meters did exist during a certain period of time, um, and then we were able to look at the meter readings, I was able to recalculate the bills based on current actual bills, and basically use the same method to say, okay, with these meter readings and this base fee, we could recalculate this bill for water for all of these meters, and then for sewer, uh, you know, you have a little bit of deviation, but for the most part, sewer's kind of a stable average number, where, you know, the, the minimum and the maximum is really pretty close to the average, so we basically just went a little bit above the average, I think, uh, just to kind of help it be conservative, and applied that to any one of those meters that was actually in existence, and added the baseline, uh, weed and pest. And then, we took what we were able to calculate for those five years and averaged it backwards, so we could show kind of a consistent trend, and that's the number we came up with. We could be more exact, we'd probably have to go through boxes, um, I don't know that it's really worth our effort at this point, but, uh, we could go that route. Um, did you consider total gallons of water used at those locations? Yeah, we actually use actual, uh, meter readings to determine that, at least for the period of 2015 to 2020 when they were available. Would it be appropriate to include interest on the amount borrowed? I really never seen that, I don't know of any basis where an entity would record interest on an inter-fund, uh, payable, um, but it could be researched. How does that mean the fund balance for the general fund as presented in the report is different from that of the general fund balance, as would be stated on a balance sheet showing all general fund assets and liabilities? Okay. Back to cash basis versus accrual. If we had an actual balance sheet, which in the government realm, they would call a state of net position, we're gonna see a lot of things that we don't see now. For one, the center fund receivable and payable, we're also gonna see accounts receivable, fixed assets, investments with accrued interest, and unrealized gains and losses, prepaid expenses, we might have some net investment in capital leases, which are kind of a quasi capital asset, grants receivable and payable, uh, in this case, at least now, uh, for June 3019, we might have showed a landfill closure liability, I don't know actually if the landfill is an integrated entity, uh, in that sense, where you would actually need to show landfill closure, um, seems like we just had it as an agency fund. But you would also show net pension liability, deferred inflows and outflows, and intergovernmental receivables and payables, so, um, there's really a lot, and if you wanted to go full accrual, that's a, a pretty high, uh, standard to reach, um, so I would, I was just really thinking about that. I think modified accrual somewhere in the middle would really be a benefit for you guys, like I said, showing that inter-fund receivable and payable, I think is pretty critical, pretty important. And again, you've also got, you're gonna have accounts receivable, that one's pretty straightforward, you're already kind of doing network, and accounts payable, we processed some tonight, so that'll be in your account scale and ledger. What percentage of the recorded town hall expenditures became part of the overhead that was then allocated through any basket? Okay, so in this case, town hall was, was used as a 100% overhead, uh, similar to that model of the internal service fund, assuming that it provides services to all funds, including itself. So, it would seem that merging those adjusting entries in the town's accounting system back in March and April was premature. Um, yeah, uh, those, those adjustments, I was, I was here, and you made the motion to have us post those adjustments, and I, I would say that it's really good for us to just start integrating this, it was really a, a perfect time, my clients come to me and said they wanna move to a new accounting system, and honestly, doing it doing it at the end of the fiscal year is just about as troublesome as doing it right in the middle or going back to the beginning of a fiscal year already and it's all kind of simple. I would just say the thing that you want to keep in mind is that's a starting point. You need to carry it forward. So you need to monitor those combined cash amounts, reconcile those inter-fund and make sure you record the activity the way you need it to be recorded. As presented, can any of these, any fund balances be tested by the auditors? Absolutely. This has been performed with the understanding that your auditors are going to review it. I've spoken with Jason and look for ways we can discuss whether it meets their standards and their threshold for what they think is appropriate. And I think we've got an understanding that we'll be satisfied they can move forward with. What financial reporting framework have the town's financial statements been prepared in? So it's cash basis and the wording of the audit opinion actually states, "The financial statements are prepared on the cash basis of accounting, which is a basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles in the United States of America." Basically, what that is to say is the financial framework is considered an other comprehensive basis of accounting and is not GAAP. That's the way they describe it. GAAP is our short term for generally accepted accounting principles. So it's informed by generally accepted accounting principles, but generally accepted accounting principles are created by the governmental accounting standards board and the financial accounting standards board. They actually set specific rules about how things can be reported, when and why. And in this case, cash basis borrows a lot from that, but it's not considered formal GAAP, okay? So number 36, "In your professional opinion, what can be done at this point to restore the water and sewer fund reserve accounts such that their reserve balances are reflective of the excesses of revenues over expenditures as close to each year over fiscal years 2010 through 2014?" Okay, so that's important. You want to restore those balances. That's a great idea. I think really it comes down to being extremely conservative in purchasing and doing everything you can to look especially at your capital procurement schedule when you're deciding, okay, what are these big ticket items? When are we going to do this project or that project? Which one do we need to do first? Making sure you have a contingency in place for any surprises you might especially have in the water and sewer fund when a treaty busts online or whatever, you've got to dig the whole thing up. But it would basically start with this. Confirm your preferred inter-fund overhead allocation method. So we've prepared this method for you. You can use it internally. You can jump off of it, kind of, you know, implement it, discuss it amongst yourselves, figure out ways you could maybe modify it to more effectively suit your needs, especially maybe in this month, next month, right? I mean, it's a concurrent thing, it's involved. So figure out what your method is going to be. Factor that into your revised expenses with your budgets. That means you're going to be looking at your budget and saying, okay, it looks like we'll actually have this number over here, this number over there. And then reserve is likely not going to be exactly the net as you're going to want to keep a certain amount in operating cash. So I would think that's an important first consideration to make, right? You're going to, it's going to promote some of this inter-fund sharing that kind of gets in the way when you have, when you don't have a sufficient amount of operating capital, operating cash as part of each fund. So that's kind of step one. It's like, that's like getting everything stable. Get a sufficient amount of operating cash in each fund. And then from there, start setting money out to reserves so you don't move, so you don't use it when you shouldn't, right? You want to, it's good to use these fund financial statements as your guide, but you also should have that combined cash number as being your final arbiter of, okay, can we expend on this? And you say, no, we don't have it. We've got to wait and postponements or maybe God forbid, you've got to get a loan. Or maybe even better, go to the slipboard, see if you can get a grant. You know, there's options you can get there, but sometimes if you don't have that thing and you say, hey, we're kind of stuck, we need another option, you don't consider another option. And that'll help you see that you have those other options available and you should think about using them. So a few more questions that relate to the 1920 budget amendment, 2021 budget ordinance. Okay, sorry, just firing through here. So I think you talked a little bit about that reserve. Again, I think you want to have an understanding of what actually is surplus cash. You want to have operating capital in the right place. You want to acknowledge inter-fund overhead and find some way to reasonably record it. Once you've done that, you should be able to say, okay, now we can start following some money around, start making some money on what we know we're not going to use. We don't need a hundred thousand for the next 12 months. Let's get a CD, let's talk to, you know, Wildstar and see how we can invest in that kind of thing. And then there was a question about the landfill fund payment because we're wrapping that up, whether it should be in the fiscal year 1920 budget amendment or the fiscal year 21 budget ordinance. It's not too big of a deal really for your financial, for that number to sit there. It's basically an agency fund where you have, the way they showed it, it's cash and a liability. You know, the cash comes in, you collect it and it goes out. It's okay if you maintain that. If you show it one more year, I would honestly say it's at least you guys' concern right now. But basically barring that, that really not being your major issue, what I would say is whenever that transaction's actually going to take place, you realistically say, we're going to get this transaction done, probably just with 21 because it's the next week. But once you know it's actually going to get done, try to put it in that period. You just don't want to, you don't want to do an amendment for '20 and have it fall into '21 because it's some hangup or whatever. Or put it in '21 and you go ahead and get to it early, right? So maybe to say that would be the postponement. Okay. Last little bit, just as additional things for you to keep in mind, one of the people I work with has been in municipal finance for about 40 years. I don't really want to share his name just because I've read some of these things go, but I'll assure you, he's very long in the tube and he's been doing this for quite some time. And I tapped him for this and got his assistance and I want to throw out a few items that you provided as feedback. He said, "Arguing about and questioning every element of the cost allocation plan does not solve the town's financial problems. Knowing who approved the transfer entries or actions of the town council over the last 20 years does not solve the town's financial problems. And if the methodology and the proposed model is not acceptable to the council, it can be modified. If application of the model to some funds is not logical, it creates other issues. Council can choose not to apply to those funds." Meaning you can pick and choose. "The model is a tool to reach a goal and not worth a non-productive discussion." And he also provided some insight into Wyoming statutes 157, 507, 606. And he said, "606 states that excess water money after setting aside money for the retirement debt and a reasonable depreciation reserve should be transferred to the general fund." So it's his impression, transfers to the general fund. In the case of a water fund is totally reasonable, but with the major caveat that you would have to have a sufficient depreciation reserve. And we have some work before we've gotten to that level. And I think by the time we get to that point, you shouldn't need to have anyone coming into the general fund from the water fund because you should be pretty well funded, leasing it all. So that's my audio book for the evening. I don't think I had anything else to discuss, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Open it up to someone first?
Yes. What's plan for the reconciliation?
The inter-fund reconciliation? I haven't really spoken with the town on how they integrate that into their own books. Essentially, this report they can use as a starting point. They'll record an inter-fund receivable payable of this amount as of July 1, 2019. And then they could use this model to cover the period of time that's passed or modify it to show what they think happened differently in this year or maybe go to the extent of finding new information that's relevant, beefing it up so they, you know, feel it's more comprehensive or more accurate. So that would really be the next step is to just start, start going either month by month or just do the whole year that's passed so far because we're almost through with June 30 being our year end. So that'll be the next step. Any other questions? Yeah?
So on the subject of inter-fund overhead allocation, because I knock stuff over. So it's obviously been debated among the council in terms of how that should come to. I think during one of, like a previous town council meeting or during a budget workshop, there's a suggestion of approximately like $70,000 a year for some inter-fund overhead allocation in terms of managing the water and sewer fund. But it's also been suggested that the implementation of those inter-fund allocation, overhead allocations and that particular percentage in cost should actually be also discussed with, such as the joint powers board. I guess my question would be, is in your professional opinion, what would be the best way to go? Is it the town just, the town of Saratoga would set their percentage that they believe that they spend in the, in the funds or they work the joint powers board to come to an agreeable rate if the joint powers board in fact does agree to such a, such overhead allocations moving forward?
I'm not like that, okay. So I'll provide my professional opinion, not my personal opinion, but my professional opinion is that there's so much that governs this inter-fund overhead allocation that's just in the town books. So whatever level of agreement they'll get from outside entities, I always think it's good to work with other parties. You know, you're going to come around the bend later, but it doesn't change the fact that 95, 98% of the data relevant to that number is in their system, their accounting system. And so I would say that the burden of the effort of putting together whatever that number is, is on the town because they have to go to the point of saying, hey, we think this is it. I would think they'd also want to go to the point where they say, this is it and this is why. And this is what we think is going on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I have a question to bounce off of that. In your experience, have you seen where municipalities and, for example, in our case, like the joint powers board haven't come to an agreement on stuff like that? Is that something that is kind of commonplace or is this, I'm just curious what you've seen in years of doing this stuff?
Yeah, I've certainly, we've seen disagreements and, you know, amongst boards and councils and all of that. It's, it's, it's sometimes can be hard to cooperate when people feel like their goals are conflicting. I would say in this case, if you can't come to a conclusion just working it out, it sounds like some of the legal matters for these entities are being reviewed. I would say you can go to the point where you formalize and you say, okay, we're going to make this process this type of thing. And one of the things that the Government Finance Officers Association denotes is they recommend hiring independent parties. And so that would be a great way to bridge that gap is, you know, you send out, you mutually send out a request for proposal and you have independent parties that neither entity is associated with, has never used before, have them come in and help you calculate, you know? That'd be a way to say, okay, it's going to be fair to you, it's going to be fair to us because neither of us are involved. And that's a great way to kind of bridge that gap and say, hey, we don't know how to come to a conclusion here, so maybe let's have someone else do it for us. So that's probably what I would recommend.
Completely unrelated question. I think it was one of the ones that Mr. Nielsen asked in the email. I didn't catch your answer. Have you seen other governmental entities in Wyoming do inter-fund overhead? What's the term used?
Inter-fund overhead allocation? I haven't seen it a lot because most of the time they've done that work ahead of time. And what you'll see more common, because this inter-fund overhead allocation is kind of something where it's sort of pushed into your system because of your size, what you'll see once the entities get bigger is what clearly becomes an internal service fund. And so they have an accounting department. And, you know, as opposed to like your accounting department, which is part of town hall and also does your minutes and like also does all of these things, as opposed to that, they have an accounting department, a finance department, you know? And they manage these tasks and it gets built out, built out as it needs to be done, you know? So IT, you know, stuff like that. So in other entities, essentially overhead is its own department.
Thank you. Sorry, full question. Is there a deadline we should have for ourselves in order to avoid any sort of adverse consequences in trying to resolve these deficits and stuff that's going on with our funds? In essence, if we create a plan and we say, we're going to, we're going to take X amount and put it in and try and repay this over 10 years, is this something that needs to be more expedient or is this something that as long as we're actively addressing it, is not going to be frowned upon by state auditors or affect us in getting loans or grants or future?
Kind of a big question, but it's an appropriate question. So it's always better to have already attempted to address something and put your best foot forward, attempt to resolve a problem. I would say, I would consider this a hot issue. I would consider getting these to where, you know, where these balances are balanced out and everyone feels like they're in a good spot as an important issue. And I'll stress again, what we come to as thinking of inter-fund receivable payable, I feel is far below what would be necessary for an appropriate depreciation reserve. So in a way, I feel that question kind of becomes a little bit new because we want to get to the point where we say, okay, we have enough if we need to replace half of this system that's, you know, 20 years old, we have enough to do that. So it's always a juggling of priorities. I would say if you have an entity out there that's concerned about it, you know, sometimes people will look at this and they'll hear inter-fund overhead allocation and they're hosting accounting trends and they won't quite understand why or what approach them ahead of time and say, we're considering doing this. Then you can document that you put your best foot forward and you didn't make a decision without their input. But keep in mind, when it comes to things like grants and outside entities providing funding, the Office of Management Budget with the White House basically sets the federal guidelines for indirect costs that are applied under federal grants. And so indirect cost is not, you know, it's not like talking about a trip to Neptune. It's something especially in the grant world that people have to do, working with another entity that has, they have a state grant and it's basically a portion of expenses that the state grant organization says, we don't really want you to try to do anything, you know, weird to figure out based on square footage what this is or whatever. Once a year, tell us how much of your payroll is under this grant and apply that percentage to every indirect cost and just do that, right? So they come up with this just basic method and they say, that's materially correct for us, that's sufficient for us. And it's consistent across everyone. And it always looks the same when they get the report, right? So it's kind of like, okay, this accomplishes a lot of things for us by making it simple. Does that answer your question?
It absolutely does. Sorry, one last for now and then I'll let you guys ask questions. I think the, there's been a lot of issue about landfill work or landfill monies. If I'm understanding your report correct, that as long as we pay the, probably not looking at the right one, there's something like $50,000 will be up to current, there wasn't any money taken away from the landfill. Once we pay that, you know, we haven't sorted that funds at all.
I'd love to say yes to that. I can't even say no to that. The number you see right in there is direct from the audit without any changes. There was, there's already an admin fee relationship between the town hall department and the landfill. Doing any kind of overhead allocation would be, we're going to have to enter here. In that, in line with what I said earlier, we're trying to get it down to the penny. We really wanted with the landfill to get it down to the penny. And in truth, over the past week, my assistant who's been helping Ms. Kelly, she's been working very closely with Suzie and Suzie's been awesome with answers, but getting that one down to the penny has taken some work.
So it's not finished yet?
It's not finished yet and it ain't over until it's over. And that might be another... And that might be another cause to, to put that off until fiscal '21, which maybe that would just mean July. But I want to research it. I want to be able to provide definitive evidence where everyone can say, this is what happened, why, these are the numbers, we can reconcile it, we have a basis for consensus here. That's my goal and I think that's what we want. So that, that here basically is, I wanted to show completeness and, and show the landfill, but essentially it's just kind of a placeholder. It's just showing it in there in context, it allows it to be there so it's matching some of the things you've seen in the financials.
Thank you, sure.
So you've been working with our auditors?
Yes, ma'am.
Jason in particular?
Yes.
How is the exhaust of your report going to affect that audit?
So they might apply some adjustments. I, I would think what we would see is maybe some changes in the cash allocation to match this. I haven't spoken with them about what they think is, is necessary to include. I find, I don't want to put words in there now, but I think they, they want your audit done and they want to get the details wrapped up really soon. And so they're probably going to come to a consideration of how much do you want to reinvent the wheel? How much can we just say, okay, this is good for now? So...
But you don't have an indication of timing or...
Oh, I do. They said within a week or two after, after this report is finalized, finalized Saturday. So they might be here next Saturday at nine P M. dropping off the audit.
I hope so.
Mr.? Richard Hodges. A question I've been struggling with is your effort to determine the cost of money coming in, water board money coming in to the town and circulating in, in the town administration. It appears, it's, it's hard for me to envision that I pay my water bill, I pay my utility bill, and Sammy does the separation that he's supposed to do, the treasurer who does the separation he's supposed to do. And so five minutes of his time and five minutes of the use of that piece of computer equipment should be deducted from my portion of the water bill that I paid. That's my impression. Now let me switch to something to me that's more obvious. We're spraying for mosquitoes now in town. Public Works provides a pickup truck to drive around and all through the neighborhoods. And they provide an employee to drive around for X number of hours. Now it's pretty clear to me as a citizen that, that the spraying device in the back is obviously something that was purchased for the what? The mosquito fund.
Sure.
Was funded. And the, the spray...
The chemicals.
Chemicals. Is obviously that chemical. The, and John, as Public Works Director, should be allocating, should be charging the weed pest, the mosquito people, X number of hours, so many dollars an hour for that employee, and X number of, so much a mile for that truck. That's, that's clearly an understanding for me that I can get my head around.
Okay.
But whether or not Sammy needs, Sammy's department needs to be charged for five minutes or ten minutes of his time to get that money into the fund and then over into Suzie's area, whatever that takes, that seems to me a bit of a reach. And I don't mean to sound negative, but it seems like a way of causing that million dollars to go away.
Okay, that's certainly not my intention. The, the accounting department certainly carries its own costs. Right now, my time here is, is being billed, most likely not being allocated under, you know, water and sewer weed pest, but we are talking about it. But I'll give you another little bit of a more concrete example. This was last week. Again, it's important to realize how you guys are in this together and how these funds work together. So I called John Winter and I'm asking him about meters and I'm asking about meter readings, trying to fill in the gaps from some data that's not there. Super helpful. Is John here? All right. Thank you for your help. Thank you for your help. And, you know, we, he was a little short staff with some people on vacation. And so he said to me, you know, I think this is this and this is this. And then he said something that meant a lot to me as an accountant evaluating this. He said, let me double check with Suzie. All right? And so the, the accounting department here, again, we're smaller. Things aren't really split like it would be in a larger entity. And it's very common for a lot of administrative tasks of all kinds of types to end up in the accounting department of a small entity. And I think that's one example that shows, okay, Suzie was able to also fill in some gaps on some of the meters, some of the activity, and that means that she's part of that process. And I don't really want to understate how much ends up happening in accounting that relates to all of these funds and their transactions. And I, I agree with you that when it comes to the, the individual utility billing, that there's a, just a very small portion of time that might relate to an individual resident's utility bill. But it, it's also very clear to me that with the workload that these individuals have, that they may spend a proportionate amount of their time working in that water and sewer weed pest. And maybe it means that for an individual resident, it's, it's a blip, it's an appetite, it's a fraction of a cent. But when we think about their department and the amount of time it takes, again, I'll use an example of, of that person I worked with who spent two days on payroll. Well, payroll is something that inevitably affects every location in, in an entity, right? And this example is another one where we say, okay, what's the percentage they spent? Water, sewer, weed and pest? What's the percentage you spent here, here, here and here? And I would love for that to be dialed in for the town where they, where they know within, I mean, depending on their threshold of, of specificity, within an hour, within, you know, half hour blocks, or maybe at least just the morning and the afternoon, four hour blocks. In the morning, I, I did all this stuff for water and sewer. In the afternoon, I was, I was at Town Hall firing, you know? But if they get that data, then this does become more accurate and relevant and we have information that can support it. And I agree with you, we want that data to push this to the point where it's accurate and everyone can say, hey, we've done our due diligence, we think we've dialed this in where we need it. But really, the, the thing that I think operates on your question the most is the proportion. How much, what's the proportion of that expense that relates to these areas? So, and it might be surprising sometimes when you think about utility billing for a town of sixteen-hundred-and-ninety people, water, sewer, weed and pest, fielding their questions about their bills for some people who don't like their bill or can't pay their bill. All these other things kind of come into play and you can see how it, it might swell to be something that's worth looking at. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I'm still having difficulty with the comparison of the two. One is so obvious and the other one is not so obvious. Although you're right, there is real expense there and I have never really thought about it. I just thought the town administration money came out of the general fund with no thought about allocating it to each one of the departments. But a quick follow-up question. Is it just my impression or is it actually your intention that the town walk, come away from your advice believing that the million dollars that has been argued about for the last couple of years does not need to be replaced because over the last twenty years they haven't paid enough in overhead to, to manage the water and sewer fund? So it really shouldn't have been there anyway?
I would disagree with whatever that inter-fund payable ends up being. I, I think the town needs to come to a point where they're confident of the number. And if, and if they feel this is sufficient, then, then that would be, that would be good. But then they need to acknowledge it as an element of their budget and, and that should, that should enforce upon them a resolution of it. It's, the concern over this has been created and now you're going to have this inter-fund payable shown on your financial statement for the town. And so the, you pulled the rabbit out of the hat and now it's going to be jumping around on stage unless you do something with it. So it will need to be addressed. I think this will force them to, to address it in a way that's logical and, and reasonable. I'd also say that we could make the case that any excess of funds, because of the way those statutes are written, we could make the case that any excess of funds goes to the general fund. But that bears with it this caveat that what is excess of funds? Excess of funds in the case of a water and sewer system is a high threshold to reach. And so that's why I'd say, hey, we could spend, we could spend lots of money allocating this, one second, one second. We could spend lots of money and time on allocating this, but I think really what it kind of imperatively comes down to is we really should be full speed ahead with establishing appropriate depreciation reserves across all funds, including the water and sewer fund. And I think that's far beyond what we would come to for an inter-fund payable. So a lot of mixed things together, but your question, sir?
So did you take into consideration when you were trying to massage these numbers around that there is in fact a line item for administration costs from the water and sewer department? And that also goes in conjunction with water usage of the town and sewer usage of the town?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
There's a twelve-thousand-dollar-a-year administration payment made to the town from the Joint Powers Board for administration fees. And also the town has never paid water. I mean, it never had to charge itself for water. But when you come up with this seventy-thousand-dollar-a-year figure to offset the administration effect, it, it just doesn't seem like you took that into consideration.
I wasn't aware of that and it wouldn't need to be factored in.
How could you not be aware of that if you're digesting that budget?
If I was adjusting a hundred thousand transactions in twenty years of trial balances?
So that's, so that's an annual payment made to the town for administration fees specifically?
Okay, I, I understand that. But keep in mind, I'm an outside party and so I'm looking at all of these transactions. Every single one of these could have, could have a hair sticking out that needs to get caught and, and combed down. Every single one.
Built into the user fees and to take that from a twelve-thousand-dollar-a-year payment to a seventy-thousand-dollar-a-year payment, that's a five-dollar-a-month increase to every user in this community.
Right. And when was the last increase in water and sewer charges and was it...
A year ago.
Did it cover all of their expenses and...
We calculated those numbers. We actually sat down and did the math a little over a year ago.
Okay, so...
To create an accurate number to cover administration, to cover salaries, wages, equipment, water, the, the, all of the utilities it takes to create water. And then also money in that fee you set aside for reserve account.
Okay, so you've done your due diligence, calculated those numbers.
We did.
And this is essentially a calculation that puts on the town that they should have come to you and, and said, hey, we think, we think these numbers are high. What can we do to accomplish a reconciliation of these amounts? That's exactly what he was basically mentioning. You have your number, they come to their number. And that might, that might be the point where you have an intermediary say, this is what this should be. So, but I'll maintain that getting to this point, even with this, I acknowledge what we're trying to accomplish at ground level with inter-fund receivable and payable. That doesn't change the fact that since October, my primary guide, my number one priority, complete the audit for the town of Saratoga. There's all kinds of other questions that are relevant and appropriate to ask, but you need to become compliant with the Department of Audit and you need to do it as soon as possible. So I don't want to diminish your question or your, your concern. I just look at it as concern number two and it's my job to resolve concern number one. And so inevitably, I have to overlook some items. Inevitably, I have to ask targeted questions that I think affect the most large heavy movers, the, the big, the big things along the way, so we can button it up for really what is to the benefit of every member of the town, get the audit done.
Mr. Nielsen, I'd like to first to then...
I was going to comment on the impact Joint Powers Board, since we're on the subject, because as I understand it, all the water revenues do not go to the impact Joint Powers Board. And I understand that there's legal counsel that's going to interpret that agreement for the Joint Powers Board. So, and, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe all user fees go to the Joint Powers Board. And if that's the case, you know, I guess that's something that needs to be discussed as we move forward.
Just going to jump back to... So I just want to piggyback on what you were saying, Richard, and offer some clarification, I think, for everybody here, including James and, if I could reference back to my, one of my questions about, it was question twenty-five, about backing out some of those expenditures that exist, that already exist in the enterprise funds for the purpose of absorbing some of the administrative costs already. And Richard hit on the one that there's, there's a line item in, you know, the water budget for administration. And that's money that is paid out of that water fund, back to the town, the process of voucher every year to do it, do one again here in probably July or August, right after the turn of the year, and cut check out of the Joint Powers Board fund to Town Hall. And then you made the statement about it would be, I forget what I said, but you know, I'd be surprised if your time here tonight, the fact that you're here and we're talking about the enterprise funds, we're talking about water and sewer, you'd be surprised that that was actually going to be built in water and sewer. Well, in fact, in the water budget and the sewer budget, there's a line for professional fees and there's a line for contract services. And that professional fees item absorbs part of the audit cost, part of the accounting cost, part of the legal fees. And so the question that I had asked that number, question twenty-five, was did you back those things out before applying the allocation from Town Hall? Or another way I think you could probably do it is, is to make that as part of the basket maybe and take that, take that out of the individual fund as an expenditure before you do the allocation, right? And so that was my question to that is, and I appreciate that, I think a lot of progress has been made over the last couple of weeks as information has started to become more freely exchanged through Jason and through these questions, obviously did another iteration probably today. I appreciate that. But I think it needs, there's, clearly there's a lot more work that needs to be done and I think you've acknowledged that. To go ahead and, and apply these overhead allocations the way they are right now, I don't think we're there yet. I know there's a measure of the audit done. We're between a rock and a hard place and I don't know that I have a solution to offer. But I think there are still some inherent issues with trying to retroactively apply twenty years' worth of overhead allocations. And I don't find it to be the right path forward personally. I may be in a minority on that. And I'm, I'm not trying to stall the audit. I want it just as bad as anybody except I probably do. But, you know, that's something that I'll read the moment it comes and be like Christmas morning, you know? I just, I just want to go on record and say that I think that doing this retroactive overhead allocation is the wrong way to proceed. And I appreciate that we identified what the deficits have been and it is an important step in identifying the problem we afford. But the numbers as they are still need some more work and just the whole idea of retroactively applying these, these overhead allocations doesn't sit well with me.
Are you suggesting that we retroactively apply those overhead allocations?
Priority number one is getting on number... Priority number one is getting our number before your audit. Um, it doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to be complete, it doesn't have to include every possible calculation. Um, it can be described as an estimate and you have the opportunity to finalize your audit with that as an estimate. I don't think there's any doubt that all of the parties that are relevant to that number will not have heard 100 times at this point that it's an estimate. So I don't think anyone would have recourse to say, well, it's in our audit, so it's this number. That would be inappropriate. That's not, that's not the objective here, the objective here. And every, every financial statement has estimates in it. So, um, I, I, when we talk about a retroactive application, uh, it's a matter of getting to the point where we clearly have a number that we can satisfy that purpose. Um, and what we've basically got here is we've come to a number in here and another entity that's relevant to the discussion is that you don't think that's appropriate. It's more a discussion. But is a discussion that, that prevents you from finalizing your audit, from becoming compliant with the Department of Audit and starting to work on the current year, which is, is more helpful. If you're working on 19 in 19 and 20 in 20 and 21 in 21, it's much better. So you might, you might find, you know, next month, we might come to this model and we might, we might say, this is wrong, this is wrong, this needs to get added, this needs to get added. And you would go back and you would say, your amount is actually this number, up or down? Um, and that's entirely valid and you entirely have the ability to do that. You could also just say at this point, based on what I'd said about the depreciation reserve, you know, as a town, uh, never mind what happened in the past, uh, we're going to ignore it. We're going to say, full speed ahead, every decision we make is based on how do we get a sufficient depreciation reserve for the water sewer and weed pest funds. That would be a way to say, hey, we don't need to debate about this number because we can agree on this other one. And they've probably got a list of assets and they've probably had a list of how old they are and they could easily do a straight line depreciation calculation of that and say, we need this number. So let's go to there. And then maybe along the way we figure out, okay, what are these funds actually doing to act on each other? But I'm telling you, it's imperative that you finalize your audit. And, and I think the biggest case for you doing that is the fact that you can't consider this an estimate. And it does not show in your financial statements themselves. And, and in truth, what's taken place because of the action of cash has caused certain balances to just be the case at the end of the year. Um, so what we're talking about is just a disclosure, just a no disclosure.
So you're, you're not suggesting that we take this balance and say, it's overall we got, you're saying, look, it might not really matter because you owe them 1.2 million, but you should really have 1.5 million in that balance as for depreciation costs, you know, forget the 1.2 million and create a plan with the joint powers board to get to that 1.5 million.
Correct, yeah. I mean, why would you worry about 900,000 or 1 million or 1.2 when you've gotta get to 1.5?
And if I am understanding you right, it could be that some of that money comes from the general fund that goes into the enterprise funds for that. It's not?
Right. And that would be fair. Um, it's, it's inevitable for us to say that that money came from those water sewer and weed pest funds in this calculation. And so you'd have to find some way to, to repay it. But if, if everyone here is in the ground by the time that money comes in, will they want to spend the rest of our lives debating it? I don't, I don't think so. I think it's better to find some way to, to make things right, make things work properly and so on and so forth. But when it comes to the actual action of cash and how that exerted itself on the town's transactions, this is where, this is where you're at. This is where your number is. And that other piece of what this number is for inter-fund payable is an estimate and it will reign supreme as an estimate. Even if you move into accrual basis, that inter-fund payable will be an estimate. And it'll be an estimate because you have 120 years of inter-fund activity that hasn't been calculated on the standard of recording an inter-fund payable or receivable.
So if we accept, um, so in order to get the audit done, um, we have to accept these estimates, turn them into the auditors in order to get that done. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. Yeah. And you'll have to accept it as an estimate and, and you'll have to accept this method of calculation as reasonable and so on. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I was just curious, just 'cause not all of us have the spreadsheet. I'm just curious, what is the estimated annual overhead allocation?
Sure, yeah. So what it came down to in the year ending June 3019, uh, basically the averages or the percentages was 9.2% from that basket was for water, 9% for sewer, and 0.7% for weed and pest. So that ended up allocating $441,000 of expenses. And it ended up being $40,474, $39,694, and then $3,064. And then we showed amounts going out of those funds, basically eliminating expenses for the water sewer and weed pest, effectively billing the general fund of $17,007, $3,0270.
So it's not just a flat fee, it's a percentage per enterprise fund?
Yeah, based on that basket, based on, based on how much expenditure in the water sewer and weed pest fund occurred in that basket. Payroll, health insurance, payroll taxes, supplies, utilities, insurance.
Thank you.
If, sorry Josh. If we accept your estimates to move the audit forward, does that mean we are also accepting these inter-fund allocations? Or is that a separate issue that the council has to determine and work out?
So there's all kinds of estimates that will show up in the audited financial statements. And some of them, like I said before, are never booked in the client's actual books and entries. There's all kinds of reasons for that because most, uh, basically the financial statements, the way they're prepared are typically done for outside parties. They're meant to always look a certain way. But internally, you may prepare them in a whole different way because they suit your needs better. One great example of that is most governmental entities have a budgetary basis where they, they base it on cash flows or they base it on, you know, service period or whatever. They use their own way to record it. And it may, may very well differ from accrual bases. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah. So from what I understand, you know, just if we accept your estimates for the audit, it doesn't mean we're accepting any inter-fund allocations. That's for us to decide still to move forward.
Yeah, it's very similar. Um, yeah. Along, along the lines of like depreciation, you may very well, and entities all over the place do this, where they, they use a standardized method for appreciation. And it will, in some cases, depreciate assets all the way down to showing a zero net book value. Well, most of us know, even if we've had that tractor back there for 100 years, we can still sell it for scrap. We can sell it for something, right? So you don't have to accept that it's worthless and then sell it to someone for nothing because you had in your financial statements, it depreciated down to zero. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, and I'm, I'm gonna apologize in advance because there's gonna be a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, for starters, 'cause a lot, a lot of discussion, since some of the questions have been around, and I know there's been the discussion about what's in the past, in the past, let's move forward, stuff like that. But, um, one of the, um, so I think one of the terms that you had used previously, um, even before the introduction of inter-fund override allocation was implicit approval in terms of, um, why funds were transferred. Um, and, you know, but under state statute, I mean, in terms of transfers of funds, there's also, uh, at least under the, and I think, you know, I've had this, had this discussion about how the uniform municipal fiscal procedures applies, doesn't apply to small towns in various parts. But, um, you know, there's, um, you know, there's there, uh, I think it's 16, yeah, 16 dash four dash 112 about transfer on the covered funds and so on and so forth. So I guess my, my question on, on, on that part, just going back a bit, is, you know, is it, I guess, the opinion that with the town having had to basically pay its bills, um, and that approving to pay these bills was basically almost in, in lieu of having a, a resolution of, okay, the money's coming from here to here to pay these funds? Um, if that question makes sense at all?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Um, basically under the way the financial statements are prepared, uh, you don't have in your actual audited financial statements a place for to record an inter-fund payable or receivable. You've made that decision on the basis of allowing yourself to process your financial statements on a lower standard. You don't have to go to full accrual, which takes a lot of work. So since that doesn't come into play later, um, that's why I use that phrase, action of cash. The cash has moved, the envelopes are there, we have one envelope that's empty and money that's gone from others because of an expenditure that may have been intended for envelope number one. So, um, also, it should be stated that the recognition of those transfers was done every year through part of the audit process where the auditors come in and they look at the financial activity, where the finances end up at the end of the year, and they say, okay, this one's down and you actually have a negative. That really doesn't, that really doesn't work. It can't be negative. So what this actually ends up being, because of the nature of the, uh, financial statements and the way they look and the principles and the fact that we can't show negative cash, but we're also cash basis, what that means is a transfer. It went from one place to the other. It's, it's, it's basically because it comes down to cash, which is dollar, dollars money. Like it comes down to that, that specific thing. Part of the reason why that's helpful for towns like this size is because the auditors can go from start, they can say, this is your bank's payment with 100 bucks, and you have 100 bucks of income and you end with 200 bucks, right? They're able to basically encapsulate. So it also serves to, to help the audit be less expensive most of the time. Um, uh, because they can basically say, we went for cash for cash. There's nothing else in the middle. And so, but what it does mean is that, especially when we have these funds, it means that with, with one spent more than half, it forced because of the nature of that, money to come from another fund. It's just the way, it's just the way it works. Your box is empty, right? Does that make sense?
Uh, a little bit. So essentially because it's cash basis of accounting, and there's not just thing is negative cash. Like you said earlier, you can't say, okay, I have negative 10 bucks, let me pay for the soda.
Right.
Um, that, that money has to come from somewhere.
Right. And the truth it did, right?
Yeah, and, and, and truth it did. I mean, it kinda goes, okay, there's cash in the bank, so let's use the cash in the bank to pay the bills and da, 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 da.
Yeah.
Um, sort of, I guess, like when I overdraft my checking account and I tell my wife, hey, can I get some money from savings? Then give me some cash and that way we're good.
That's a perfect example. So like in that example, like the checking account would be one fund, savings account would be another fund. Yeah.
Okay. Um, so my next question.
The key step in there was, like you called your wife, right? You know what I mean? You made it known that you were doing that activity, making that transfer. I'm not saying that has to be your wife or, right? It was just, it was an action that took place there before that money moved across the account, to cross the fund. There was an acknowledgement.
Is it our burden as town council people, every time we accept these bills, to know if we have that money in the general account to pay those?
That's, that's appropriate to say. If, like I said, if you're in a pooled cash system, you're gonna need to manage those assigned cash amounts and make sure that they're appropriate. If, if for some reason one account, and this is where you're gonna have to, if you wanna handle that process and handle it appropriately, if one account does go below its assigned cash, you will need to record an increase in your inter-fund payables. Um, because basically what you'll have to do is you'll have to integrate into your own internal accounting, this concept that negative cash can't and doesn't exist. And the way you'll account for that is you would either record an inter-fund transfer. It's probably also worth saying that, uh, an inter-fund transfer is different than an inter-fund payable. An inter-fund payable is temporary, an inter-fund transfer is permanent. So when, when the money goes out, you call it a transfer, that's one you've done. But when it's a payable or receivable, that means that there's recourse and, and it's meant to go back. And so really in our effort to establish what an inter-fund payable would be along these lines, it's, it's your willingness to acknowledge that there's recourse left in place.
So I think a good example of this is from 2018 and on, or in essence, the time that this council has been present, I know that Mr. Nelson and myself, the other people in this council, anytime money's going to be spent, we look at our budget and say, do we have money? How would we even run our budget for this? And if not, where's it gonna come from? So in my opinion, that's where, if we're not doing that, then we're just writing empty checks and the money comes out where it comes. But if we're paying close attention, we know where this money's coming from and we're gonna catch when we're taking it out of, you know, the envelope that we shouldn't. And, and so that's, in my opinion, part of our responsibility is to have council people to do that so that we can avoid these deficits.
Right. And, and you should, you should be very content on looking at the report that shows you those numbers. And you should also be willing to institute the controls necessary within the accounting system and provide staff with the training and skills and maybe additional software. Cause I know there's modules in Cessell that help with that process where you kind of click and reallocate it and it all ends up where it's supposed to be based on transactions that took place. But, yeah, those things.
Um, just to ask a couple more questions. Um, so the other thing that was discussed tonight was how by state statute, and it's, and also based on the cash basis of accounting, the town cannot show a general fund deficit. I mean, that's by state statute. I mean, state statute also says I can't leave my car running during the winter and I do all the time. Um, but I guess for, just, just, just a hypothetical, if it came down to, okay, you know, and, and like we've discussed, if the general fund was in a deficit for years with money being transferred to help pay the bills, if it came down to, you know, some auditor, you know, not this auditing company, but some auditing company said, you, you know, you've got, uh, deficit fund, you know, you've got a deficit fund balance, there's nothing, you know, sure, you can do all this, da, 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 but we have to report this. I mean, what exactly, even though it's not legally allowed, I mean, would that, would that trigger anything? What, I mean, what, what would essentially happen if it was just, you've got deficit balance, we're done?
Right. So deficit fund balance happens, non-compliance happens, and this town will have fines in their financials and non-compliance. Um, in that example, so it's probably helpful for me to go ahead and describe, uh, in that worst case scenario of this inter-fund payable, if we were full accrual, what would take place? So let's assume that the general fund has no assets. And let's assume, just for the sake of the simplistic analysis, it has no, it has no liabilities, it has no assets besides cash. And what we see is we see a, um, financial statement, uh, statement in that position for the general fund. And we have zero for cash and an inter-fund payable of 1 million. We have a deficit fund balance. And that would be an instance where, uh, you're not showing something that quite honestly would just look really absurd to the Department of Audit of showing a negative number, um, instead of an inter-fund payable. But you would legitimately, and the way things are legitimately recorded, have a deficit fund balance because you have more liabilities than you have assets. Does that answer your question?
So sort of like, and I'm gonna go back to personal bank account.
Sure.
You know, I'm looking at my bank account and it says, hey, this month you spent 1,000 bucks and your paycheck was 500.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's like, it's like the, you know, Yeah, yeah, so it's like, it's like the, you know, the personal world, it would be net worth, right? So obviously, consumer debt, right? Let's say you have $100 in your checking account and you just bought a $500 TV. You have $100 of assets on a credit card, that's what I'm saying. You have $100 of assets and $500 credit card liability. You have a negative fund worth, or net worth, sorry, of $400, the difference, you know? You have more liabilities in that case than you do assets, you're in a deficit. It's just the trick that when we're recording cash, we want to show the way cash actually worked. And so in the cash basis format, if we show a deficit fund balance, we're also showing something that's unreal, negative cash. Because that's all you've got on your financial statement. And you can't really show negative cash because cash did actually exert on another fund. You know, in realist, in truth, that cash was taken from another fund. Whether it was an approved transfer, or the right step was done, or whatever, the cash was taken. And so, it's kind of like that thing, yeah, okay, is negative cash more realistic? Well, not really, because it doesn't show the effect it's had on the other funds. And that's the whole purpose of this exercise. And that's a cornerstone of what those fund financial statements would be. You'd want to see, how did these funds interact with each other? Ideally, it was all appropriate, it was nothing that shouldn't have happened, no transfer that wasn't approved, so on and so on and so on. But if that wasn't the case, you wouldn't want to conceal it and brush it under rocks tomorrow. It's a combination of factors. But does that answer your question?
A little bit, yeah, I guess. Yeah, Mr. Nelson's question, so I'll let him.
Okay, sure. So on the, on the report that we've been discussing, you mentioned that the general fund will show a positive balance, that they will show a positive cash balance and not show a negative balance.
Yeah. Can we discuss that?
Yeah, if you could, I mean, yeah, if you would, and what, my, my, my question is, what is the, what is the due to, what is the liability, if you will, that will then be reported? Maybe not in that same amount, but as a footnote or however, I don't know how it will be reported for these cash-based sciences, but you just might.
Yeah, sure. So let's look at the report with the green board. It's the one for the 20-year period ending June 30, 19. This is the one that basically summarizes the whole analysis and all the, all the activity that took place. So you'll see there at the bottom, we've got general fund, community garden, community center, 911 assessment, medical clinic handles. And these individual funds that are considered part of the big general fund, they've had their own activity over the years. And some of them have not been in the situation where they've recently required a bailout. Essentially, they've had, they've had net activity after we do this analysis. So those individual funds have shown a surplus. And it could, could be discussed whether you wanna take money from the community garden to pay back the water fund, or whatever, that's a whole different ball of wax. But basically, in this method, in this calculation, it's either zero, or it's whatever remainder was left since it was last zero. And so, like, if we look, if we look at the one through, yeah, the blue, you'll see that that one was $15,657 for community garden, and $14,732 for 911. So those ones went into the beginning of the year with that amount, and then, or actually, I'm sorry, I need to look. Yeah, let's see that one. So let's look at, let's look at the top. So we went from $15,651 on line one of the, of the report with the blue board, we went from $15,651 with no revenues and expenses, and ended with $15,651. And then on one, we started with $22,091, we had revenues, expenses operating against that, and that came to $14,732. So they didn't have, they didn't have any transfer activity in that year. They started with a surplus, ended with a surplus, and that's how it'd be shown there, and that's why you'd end up with a positive amount. But when we talk about actual general fund ten, that one is one that we're basically saying is very active, it's kind of like the interstate for these interfund transfers. And that's one where there was a surplus, but there was a necessary transfer out.
So if the $30,390 is gonna be the ending balance for the general fund, using that number, is that the number that'll most likely be reflected in the audit, if we choose to accept these allocations?
I'd have to, I mean, that's a question for the auditors. It's a matter of what, because they, every time they change a number, their technical review has to happen again, and their proofreading review has to happen again, and their manager, managing partner review has to happen again. So they might look at it and say, okay, this is good enough for now. We'll go ahead and send our rep later to the town with these numbers and say, do you think this is good enough?
So, if that $30,390 stays, what's the total due to buy the general fund?
Sure.
To both, to both special revenue and enterprise fund?
As calculated here from that green report, or the report with the green board, on that line 14, that would be the net, that due to from transfers, that would be the net according to this calculation. 1,037,000, that was essentially pulled over those currents from the enterprise.
Okay, thank you.
The final question. So, one of the biggest reasons you were brought in was due to questions about the previous audit that was put, or the last audit was put out by ACM. And everything you're doing is to get the next, is to get the town their next audit. And in that time, you have worked very, very closely with the town hall staff. One of the, one of the findings on the previous audit was a lack of internal controls. And, and you talked at one of the previous town council meetings about having the checks and balances, you know, one person gets the money, the other person enters the money, stuff like that. And then you were also even engaged to help with bank reconciliation. And, you know, this may be something that you're able to answer or not, but, you know, is it possible that that finding of lack of internal controls may appear on this next audit? And if, and just in the same discussion, it's like there's more work to do, you know, would that just be more, more work that the town may have to, you know, may engage with you to get to the point where there may be, where that finding is not found, I guess?
Sure. So, I'll actually kind of in the grand scheme and in the small scheme. Nowadays, I think it's almost imperative that entities of this size have outside consultants, accountants to help them prepare their financial statements for the audit. The primary reason for that is, last year, when you received that lack of internal control of financial reporting finding, it wasn't related, I mean, it was related in part to what was going on, probably should say, lack of internal control of preparation of financial statements. It was related partly due to the numbers that are actually in your system, but it was related more so to being able to internally get to the level of a full financial statement set with full disclosures that satisfies everything the auditor believes is necessary. Everywhere I go nowadays, auditors can't do that for the client anymore. They used to. They used to do it, they used to audit it, and they used to go to the client and say, this is everything that's going on in here, and why? Don't you agree? Yeah, the client says, I agree, that's sufficient for me. That's not happening anymore. The auditing standards have become extremely stringent in terms of those independence requirements. And so, entities, especially like the town of Saratoga, are having a higher outside help or have that fund. Yes, sir?
So in all the time you've done this in your years, is it internal control one that's always a maturity time for municipalities to be done?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it happens all the time. I don't want that to get lost. Internal control over, internal controls over the accounting system itself is typically one that you'll have. Because quite simply, there's not enough segregation of duties to prevent a lot of these things from going on. A lot of the, a lot of these, you know, having your hand in every aspect of it. When you've got one or two people, it's really hard to split it out. Now, we've been able to do some things, sometimes pretty minimally, especially when, like I have a client who has a cash basis financial statement set, we do their bank rec, we limit it into that fund. Because in that case, that specific process being excluded covered so many areas of that segregation of duties and their cash to cash like the town is, that that finding was able to be limited. So it's worth thinking about and being creative on how you can resolve it. But yeah, those findings come up all the time. And then, did I answer your question?
A little bit, I guess, you know, I guess it'd be more of a second part of it is, and you touched on it a little bit, in the fact that, you know, you do banking reconciliation for a, a client who does cash basis of accounting.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, my question, the sort of second part of that is, is what do you think would be able to get to the point where, you know, I guess, the town, you know, the town staff would be able to get to that point where those checks and balances were being?
Oh, sure, yeah.
I guess not so much followed because, from the sounds of it, they are, they are following them, but I guess what, what other procedures would need to be put in place going forward?
Right, so it's a relatively repetitive process, but I've found working with clients in this task, they're, usually when you first show up, wow, there's stuff all over the place, and it's a mess, and you gotta fix it. Next year, it's a little bit better, next year after that, it's a little bit better. Every time I do this, I'm always trying to push more of the tasks onto the client themselves and train them and educate them. Sometimes if you're on the fly and you're just trying to get the on and out the door, it's harder to do those things. But in truth, you know, some of it just relates to the system itself, having some upgrades, some of it relates to the staff getting some training, some of it relates to specific tools you create, specific processes you create. So data that hasn't been tracked is tracked, things like this, you know, putting a process in place where at the end of the year, you've got a number and you're not trying to come up with one. So as time goes on, it gets easier. I think more and more so that it's always gonna be, there's always gonna be this little sliver, at least, that's gonna be external, especially if you wanna eliminate risk related segregation.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Thank you for being so prepared to answer questions. I thought it was excellent. I appreciate it. I hope I didn't bore you one to death. And, yeah, I think it's worth considering these things. It's also probably worth saying, one, I've worked real closely with Suzie and Sammy and Stella, they've never had any issue with any question I've asked, and that's, that's worth mentioning. It's also worth saying that if you've gone to this level of looking at these things before now, you wouldn't have ended up at this point where one party's wondering what the other party's doing and why. I just encourage you to find a way, really governmental entities, you're, you're all kind of in the same boat. You all have limitations on what you can do with your money. You all have massive constraints on what you must do with your money, and limited routes for gaining additional funding. Your best bet is always to try to find ways to work together. And maybe there are instances where you wanna reach out and ask for help, go to the state lines and investment board. Instead of trying to find a way to pull it from money that you have or don't have, or shouldn't have in a certain area, ask for help with a grant. So I just encourage everyone to try to really find a way to get past this. It's been a challenging process for you, and I know it's been difficult. There is an interfund payable, it's not in debate. There is money that's gone from one fund to the other, that's not in debate. The thing that can be debated, how far do we wanna go to figure it out? What expense do we wanna incur to try and figure it out? How do we make ourselves whole and get things where they need to be? That's it? Is that, is that it?
Last chance, last question.
Just for the record, I've been recording this and it's almost two and a half hours that you've been.
It's all right. You know, I, I enter every meeting of this type with the goal that I hope people can establish consensus. I hope you guys find a way to all be able to agree. If not, in the next month or the next year or two.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.